Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and I hereby call our Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I certify at Quorum as President that the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. The monthly meetings are open to the public. Although these meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the Board. Again, we thank you for being here tonight. At this time, we're going to move on down to item number fifteen. We'll take item fifteen out of order. The Board will convene into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, 551071, 551072. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of these discussions will be conducted back when the Board reconvenes into open session. It's now 6:01 PM and will be dismissed into closed session. Well, good evening. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the School Board, and that was Aaron Blackwood, a second grader. He's part of the Forney Academic Advanced Fine Arts Academy, and he played for us tonight. So give him another round of applause.[84.11][84.11][applause] Thank you, Aaron, for entertaining us tonight. We'll call this meeting to order, and then move on to item number three. We have our welcome and our invocation tonight. Kyle Stewart from Endeavor Church is here to lead us in our prayer. And so, Kyle, if you would make your way up to the microphone over here. As he's coming here, Kyle is with Endeavor Church, and we're proud to have Kyle and Endeavor Church as partners to our Forney ISD family. So let's all rise for the invocation.
All right, let's pray. Dear Jesus, thank you for this school district. God, we thank you for who you are. We thank you for being our Creator and our Savior and for dying for us on the cross. We thank you for your love and your grace and your mercy. And I just ask, God, that you would protect this district, that you would protect each campus and each staff member and each student, God. And I just ask for wisdom for our school board and our principals and our leadership here at Forney ISD, that you would give them the wisdom that they need to honor you in their leadership. Again, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. It's in your holy and mighty name we pray. Amen.
We'll continue on with some recognitions. At this time, we'll do Students of the Month. I'd like to ask Mr. Josh Garcia, Principal of Warren Middle School, to introduce our Secondary Student of the Month. Following that, Mrs. Wendy Bailey, Principal at Crosby Elementary, to introduce her Elementary Student of the Month.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Terry, School Board. This evening, I get the privilege of introducing everyone to Warren Student of the Month. Ms. Cassidy Carter. Cassidy is here tonight with her mom and her dad, Jimmy and Ursula, and her brother, who's an FHS senior. She's Cameron Carter, who also went through Warren. Cassidy's in the eighth grade and is a product of Forney ISD, attending both Henderson and Ray. She is currently in all advanced classes, is active in our girls' athletics program. She just came from a basketball game in which Warren won, so that's great. But she also played volleyball, and will do track as well. She plays clarinet in our mighty Warren Band. And then, she also serves as our Student Council President at Warren Middle School. So she does a lot for us there at Warren. Cassidy's teachers could not stop raving about her and just praising the type of person that she is. Her stu- co-sponsor just went on and on. He stated that Cassidy leads through her attitude and her actions. She encourages with kind words and a gentle guidance and models of behavior that she desires of those around her. Her reading teacher expressed how Cassidy embodies everything you could hope for in a student. She's a hard worker. She thinks outside the box. She works well with the others and her peers and asks questions that really challenges herself and her classmates. She stated that Cassidy has a strong work ethic but doesn't ever take herself too seriously, and she walks into each and every room every day with her million-dollar smile. Cassidy's favorite subject is math. She says that it just comes naturally to her, and that she enjoys the challenges that it brings and the complexities that it brings as well. She would like to use those math skills one day as either a lawyer or an engineer or a business lawyer for an engineering firm. But her ultimate goal and dream would be to be the President of the United States. So, yes.[294.12][294.12][applause] So again, it's my honor to recognize Ms. Cassidy Carter as our Warren Student of the
Good evening, Dr. Terry, President Ferris, School Board members. It is my pleasure to introduce our Elementary Student of the Month, Josiah Mewks. He is a fourth grader at Crosby, in Ms. Carpenter's homeroom class, and is joined tonight by his mom, his stepmom, Jalisa, and Brittany respectfully, along with his Aunt Jalia, cousin Jelaya. And joining us on FaceTime is his grandparents Charlie and Joseph. When considering our Student of the Month, we had many wonderful students to choose from. Of course, we wanted someone who has stepped up to the academic challenges, who is respectful to their teachers, kind to their peers, but more importantly, we wanted someone who was unique in their own special way and wasn't afraid to live it. Josiah has dreams of one day being a footballer or basketball player, but his backup plan, if that doesn't work, is to be a police officer. Board, wouldn't it be great in twelve years if he came back and joined our Forney ISD Police Department? Josiah combines his love for sports with his love for reading, and when asked what his favorite book was so far this year, he said "A Whole New Beginning," and went on to tell me about how it was a fifth grader who has an autistic friend who was taken out of their comfort zone when they met their new basketball coach, Mr. Avacito. Josiah's appreciation for reading, his loving demeanor, and his unique spirit has led us to choose Josiah to represent Crosby for Forney ISD Student of the Month. We know that Josiah is a bright student and that his star will continue to grow brighter as he matures. We look forward to keeping track of his progress as he moves into intermediate school, and we wish him nothing but the best in life. I present to you Justin Mewks.[417.00][417.00][applause]
Good. Rise for our pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one
We're going to continue on with some more recognitions. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Neil Weaver, Athletic Director, to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Members of the Board and guests, it's always a pleasure to be able to recognize outstanding student athletes in Forney ISD. We are fortunate to have many. These young ladies could not make it. At the end of volleyball season, we do have them here now. These are the Academic All-State Award winners for North Forney High School Volleyball. Coach Jose Marrero is going to come up here and help. What an Academic All-State is, is the Texas High School Coaches Association and the Texas Girls Coaches Association recognize high-performing student athletes for athletic performance, for academic performance, their GPA and test scores are taken into account, and for high moral character and contributions to their team. There are three North Forney High School representatives here this evening. I would be remiss if I didn't mention our assistant coaches here, too, Coach Victoria Torres. I know she's an integral part of that staff. Coach Marrero, I know two professional, or former professional volleyball players, and he's one of them, so it's pretty neat. They had a great year this year, much improved from last year, and I know these young ladies are part of that. Cameron Bartolio could not be here tonight. She is out of state, left today to go to a national qualifying tournament. But Jenna Carter is. Jenna, would you come up and join us, please?[630.29][630.29][applause] Coach, come on around if you would. Jenna's in the top ten percent of her class at North Forney as well, and Kiana Trejo is in the top three in her class at North Forney.[643.16][643.16][applause]
Thank you very much, and congratulations, ladies. Moving on next to our Texas Art Association Award, I'd like to ask Mr. Macca Jones to speak now about that one.
How you all doing today? I'd like to pay recognition to the community, the Board, Dr. Terry. I am here to honor four students today that will be receiving state recognition for their artistic talents. The first of which will be Miss North Forney High School's very own Evelyn Acosta. Evelyn has been honored to be Forney ISD's inaugural Youth Art Month winner. Her artwork will be shown at the Bullock State Museum of Art History in Austin, Texas the entire month of art of March. Evelyn will be honored, along with other state winners, at a special reception on March 10th, 2024. All right. In addition to Evelyn, we have three other students we're going to acknowledge. These three students actually were part of the TSA/TSAB Convention Gallery. This exhibit showcased pre-K work from twelfth, pre-K to twelfth grade from across the state of Texas. Over 120 school districts were represented at the Texas Association of School Administrators and Texas Association of School Boards Convention. The TSA/TSAB Convention exhibit was displayed in the Exhibit Hall at K. Bailey Hutchinson Convention Center in Dallas from September 29th to October 1st. The first student I would like to acknowledge is 12th grader Ada Hunt, Forney High School teacher and father, Aaron Hunt.[856.01][856.01][applause] They're not here today. It's fine. Next will be 11th grader Alexa Austin, Forney High School, and their teacher Tara Torres.[871.12][871.12][applause] The next student will be 10th grader Alondra Gonzalez, North Forney High School, and their teacher, Michael Coker.[881.12][881.12][applause] And next, of course, you just saw her, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Evelyn Acosta, North Forney
Moving on, we have some recognitions for Forney High School Percussion, National and International Honors. Mr. Mario Luna, Fine Arts Director, to share these information with us.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and Board. Yes, we have our percussion students again out here. It seems like this is starting to become a normal thing. Trust me, this is not a normal, normal thing. So North Forney actually received this recognition a few years ago, and these students actually performed in Indianapolis because of our Society International Convention last year. So tonight, we would like to recognize our Forney High School percussionists. They performed at the Midwest Clinic. It's in Chicago. It is the world's largest instrumental music education conference. Over 17,000 music educators attend this, professionals. It's been going on for about 70 years. There's about 40 concerts. Only five percussion ensembles from the world, because this is just not a Texas thing, this is not a United States thing, this is groups from Japan coming on, but, I mean, they pretty much picked five ensembles like this from the world. And, I mean, this is prestigious, like huge deal. So they performed December 22nd in Chicago to a room that was pretty packed. I mean, it was just so neat to just see them perform at a high, high level. So this is Mr. Warren and his Forney High percussionist. Mr. Shane James can't be with us tonight, but he was a huge help for that event, too.
Thank you all so much, and that is a great honor to be invited and to be recognized in that. So congratulations to all the families. Moving on then to our next item, TMEA All-State Musicians. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, again. Yes, we have two Forney High School students to recognize. We have Caleb Bowie, if he can make his way to the front, and Gabriel Angelo Ramirez. These are two Forney High School musicians from Forney High. So they started this process back in July, during March's season, you know, because there's so much going on in March's season. They learned three etudes during that time, you know, with their lesson teachers, all those folks. They passed the first level, which is all-region. They went on to the area contest with 4,143 students, and both these students actually placed first in the area. So they are first chair in the area on their instruments. They are traveling to San Antonio on Wednesday, and they perform in San Antonio at the Texas Music Educators Association Conference. 69,634 students went through this process, and it's like down to the 2%. So, I mean, these students are high, and I believe they're both seniors. So I don't know if either of those two plan to major in music or not, but, I mean, they are the top 2%.[1211.41][1211.41][laughter] Because, I mean, we are opening new schools, and I need to hire more people, so. Okay? So this is our two Forney High School All-State students that will be performing in San Antonio this week.
Congratulations to both families. Moving on then, we'll move to staff recognitions. The Premier Community for Theater Education Award, and I'd like to ask Dr. Judy Weber, Chief Learning Officer, to the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and School Board. I'm really proud to share that Forney ISD is now a Texas Thesbian Premier Community for Theater Education District for the second year in a row. The Texas Thesbian Premier Communities for Theater Education Award is similar to the Best Communities in Music Education Award that we've won for several years, but it really honors school districts that provide theater programs with the resources to achieve excellence in theater education. And we all know how important and the things kids do to get from participating in theater programs, and it really shows a lot of hard work on Janaye and her staff in earning this award, and we hope to earn this year after year. It does allow us then to move on, and we're eligible now to apply for the Educational Theater Association's National Premier Communities for Theater Excellence Award nationwide. So let's go Forney. So congratulations. We're delighted to win this award, second year in a row.[1333.87][1333.87][applause]
Next, our Community and Business Partnerships. At this time, Ms. Susan Johnson, Executive Director of our Strategic Partnership. So would you please come up to the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Terry, and distinguished Board members. Tonight, we are here to announce yet another partnership going into Opportunity Central. Text TV is a streaming platform, much like Netflix, but with a focus on Texas-related and Texas-connected content. Programming includes a wide variety of movie, TV, and music genres. Text TV leadership includes seasoned veterans of the entertainment industry, much like Mr. JB Patterson, who is here with us this evening. He has decades of experience in production, design, marketing, licensing, programming, music, and more. Later this year, in 2024, the Text TV app will launch. In preparation of this, the Text TV team is expanding the Text TV Content Library, which provides multiple opportunities for student integration at the OC. Text TV presence at the OC will include an office editing suite, practicum and employment opportunities for students, media production, live event production experiences, and managerial assistance with the OC recording studio.
That concludes your recognition. So if some of you need to leave, feel free. You will not hurt our feelings, but we're going to continue on with our agenda here.[1524.16][1524.16][applause] Since we just spoke about the OC, I must say to Dr. Terry and all your team, Friday night was an excellent turnout. It was a great team effort, and it truly is clear how you've created one team, because everybody pulled together and did their part, and it shows one Forney family, and we had a great turnout. I think everybody had a great time, so thank you all, and I want to give you a big hand for pulling it off.[1581.04][1581.04][applause] Now let's talk about how we're going to pay for it. John, you're up next.[1590.66][1590.66][laughter] So moving on to our monthly financial report, Mr. John Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Excuse me. Tonight's financial report, it includes operating results through the month of December. Since this is our fiscal year starts on July 1st, this is kind of the halfway point in the year. So just to start with, the general fund revenue highlights. Year-to-date revenue recognition was 63.1 million, or 33% of the amount estimated. Now, this is 20% less than what it has been comparatively from the prior year and years prior to that. The majority of the variance is due to the fact that in December, Saturday and Sunday, which was the 30th and 31st, and this kind of impacted tax collections and the timing which we collected those tax collections from taxpayers. So when you look in the January, the January books, on January 3rd, we got a tax deposit on 34.4 million, which is approximately 18% of our current revenue estimate. So, you know, if you take that into consideration, it's really pretty close to where we would be at this time of year. So we fully expect in January, at the end of January, when we present that January report, that our revenue collections will be pretty close to normal. Moving on to expenditures, year-to-date is 100.9 million, or 52% of the amount appropriated, and this is 2% higher than the prior year. And we spoke about this in past board meetings, but the retention pay that we had in November is primary reason for this variance. You know, all that pay was loaded into November instead of being spread out over the year like our normal payroll would be. So we would expect our expenditures to be a little bit higher until we progress a little farther along into the year. And so moving into food service, the highlights of this, starting with revenue, we had 3.9 million collected year-to-date, and then we served almost 81,000 meals that qualified for reimbursement through the federal lunch program in December, which is up 35% from the prior year. Our year-to-date expenditures is 4.6 million, or 49% of the amount appropriated. So through the first half of the year, our expenditures exceeded our revenues by about $700,000, and this is by design. The federal government will not allow us to accumulate more than three months of operating expenditures in the Food Service Fund, and we exceeded this amount at the end of the last fiscal year. So we had to submit a plan to spend down these funds, and they were spent, about $500,000 was spent on the employee retention program for the food service employees. The remaining $200,000 was spent on a vehicle to transport food to our campuses and for kitchen equipment. So pretty well, we're expected to be this time of year in the Food Service Fund. Moving on to debt service, year-to-date revenue collection was 9.2 million, or 17% of the amount estimated. This is about 40% less than the prior year, and just like in the general fund, the timing of the tax collections occurred because of around the holiday weekend, Christmas time. You know, it impacted the comparison between years. But again, in January 3rd, in the debt service, we received a deposit of 21.8 million, which is about 40% of the is about 40% of the current year's revenue estimate, so we'll be pretty well right on target when January ends. As far as expenditures for the month, or excuse me, year-to-date is 31.1 million, and this hasn't changed since September, so there's really no activity to report in our debt service fund for this month. And then finally, the cash investments on hand, the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital projects totaled 352.2 million, and the majority of which is on deposit in our capital project fund. So, that concludes our financial report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So, this is our second quarterly report.
This is per activity that goes through December 31st of this fiscal year. Just to start off with, again, our cash and investments on hand was 353.4 million dollars, and just like in prior reports, those funds are on deposit at Citibank, which is our local depository, or one of three approved investment pools that you can see there, Texpool, Logic, and Texas Class. Now, we earned interest on those deposits as low as 4.9% to as high as 5.6%, so those are significantly higher than they have been in the recent past, as we've discussed in our prior quarter report. And so, total interest income for the quarter was 5.7 million dollars, so pretty substantial amount of collections, and it's good if you've got money that you have on deposit, but not so good when you're borrowing it, but we'll take it while we can get it. So, that's the investment report. Again, I'll be happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any comments? I hear none. Moving on then to 6C, our quarter tax collection report.
Again, this is for activity through December 31st, and just like in the last quarter, you know, our property values for this year that we're basing our tax levy on was 9.2 billion. This is 10% increase over the prior year. It's actually, as we pointed out last time we did this, it was significantly more than that as far as tax growth, but because of the $100,000 home state exemption increase and so forth this year, it kind of backed off what we could tax on, so. But even with all that said, we still, the tax property values increased 10%, and that yields a levy of 118.5 million dollars. So, up through December, we collected 15.1 million of that levy, which is only 12, almost 13% of the levy. Again, that's significantly lower than it has been in prior years, but there's reasons for that, as we've explained in our financial report, because of the weekend, the last two days falling on a weekend. As far as delinquent tax collections, we're at 541,000 dollars, which is about half a percent of our current levy, and you know, other than the timing of our tax collections, this is pretty well where we expect to be. We assume in January, when we, or actually will be March when we present the next report, that our collections will be pretty well on target. And so, that's the tax collection report. Again, happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions? I hear none. Thank you very much. We'll move on to 6D, the Future Ready Update. This time, Robin Pierce, would you please come to the microphone? She's our Executive Director of Innovation and Information.
Good evening, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and Board. It's that time of year where I have the honor of, God, I can't, apologize, reading glasses, I can't see y'all, but I can't see my words if I don't wear them. Sorry.
We're over here.
I know. It's so bad, I'm just going to take them off. So, first, I'll start with just a real quick update, a fall recap of what we've done this year. So, we had our first event at the OC with our college fair, where we had our largest turnout in six years. We had over 65 colleges or trade schools in attendance with a packed house. So, that was a great first event for us, a smaller event than what we just had Friday. We have added five new career technology student organizations for Fornie ISD, which is huge. And that puts us at a total of nine, which covers all of our programs of study now. All of our programs of study now have a career technology student organization tied to them. With that being said, of the nine, four have advanced to state this year, which we're super excited about. We are sending 31 students to state this fall, or this spring, which is awesome for our students, and some of those are first-time going to district and regional, so super proud of them. We've had six TSI testing dates, and TSI is an entrance college exam for every college student wanting to go to a college or a trade school, they have to take the TSI, and we've offered six of those so far this year. We've had two FAFSA nights, which are the federal student aid application, which is now mandatory for all seniors to have to graduate, and you have to fill out to get student aid for college or a trade school as well. And we've had two dual-credit or focus nights that we just had last month with a great turnout. It was a packed house. We barely had enough room for our dual-credit sessions, we had to open more, so it was awesome. Really excited about next year and being able to get the full force of the OC to get more people out there to talk about our programs. And then, our student workers, 100% of the business partners currently at the OC have our students working. Every business has one of our, one or more of our students working for them, so we're really excited about that and how that's working. Higher ed partnerships. Well, we have a lot of information. So, we just finished registration for the 24, 25 school year, and we have over 1,300 requests for dual-credit courses. As you can see, we've had a steady increase over the past six years, and that's due to our great partnership with Dallas College, offering that free tuition, saves families a lot of money before they go off to college. And the amount of money we have saved this year, and this includes the summer of 2023 until as of today, we have saved our students and parents 637,767... No, 637,767... Did I say that well? I'm just going to keep going, you can read it. A lot of money, a lot, a lot of money. So, we're really proud of that savings that we are allowed, or we have provided. This May, we will have 33 students graduate with their associate's degree. We had 15 last year, so each year, we are doubling that, we're getting better. We had our first cohort of our HVAC students will be, this senior class will be the first cohort that's gone through the Dallas College courses in our partnership with them, and we will have six graduate with 18 or more college hours, as well as their Level 1 HVAC certification, ready to go and work. Patient Care Tech, we started that last year, and we will have our first cohort. It was a small group, but eight of them have already completed their hours, and we have 15 in that program right now, but eight have already completed those hours, their rotations, and will get their health certificate for Level 1 certification for Patient Care Tech, which we're super proud of them for. What we offer to our community and our students is phenomenal. You couldn't ask to be in a better district, in my opinion. We offer 78 college courses to our students and our parents and our community, family members, anyone who lives here, or teachers, their kids, who don't even live here, but they teach here, and so, that's phenomenal. So, thank kudos to you guys for your forward thinking and getting us there. We have 234 community members taking over 618 college credits currently in Fornie ISD. That's massive. Whether it's one class in English, or they're in our HVAC or welding program, or getting, working towards their associate, so we are helping a lot of our community members as well through this program. We have 19 industry certifications that we offer, some of which are through Dallas College, which puts us at 100% of our programs of studies ends in a industry certification. So, every student in a program of study will leave with an industry certification at completion of that program of study. We have 190 students in a career workforce course, so that is HVAC, automotive, welding, cosmetology, electrical technology, did I say, and automotive. Those are our college courses that we offer for college credit and certifications in those areas. Moving on to our Future Ready Skills, K-12, that we keep building on every year, but just wanted to give you a real highlight of kind of what we're doing. In grades 5 through 8, our students participate in taking interest inventories, career assessments, campus tours, in real life, as well as CTE principals' courses. All of our Fornie ISD students that complete middle school with us in Fornie will leave 9th grade with a minimum of two high school credits, with the opportunity to gain up to five high school credits before going into 9th grade, which really puts them ahead of the game so that they can take more courses such as CTE, or if they're in co-curricular or extracurricular activities, they can do more things because they have more room in their schedule, and that is our goal, is for them to experience everything. Our elementary campuses participate in Future Ready morning meetings, monthly Future Ready themes, career days, and now we have added a traveling career closet, which I'm super excited about. Our fashion design students polled some elementary kids, and they are actually making, designing, and sewing, and making costumes, career costumes, that will travel around to all the elementaries for their career days, and our fashion design students will dress up and then dress up with the kids, and they're currently our education and training kids, or writing lessons to teach kids about those careers. So, it's really, it's really neat to see the little, they have a little Z-Rack with all these little mini costumes on it, so cute, but really has involved lots of our programs to help our students. In high school, we have designated industry certification days for each program of study to allow ample time for each certification exam for those classes. We offer SAT and TSI testing days during the school day, as well as on Saturdays. We have added an SAT prep class for this fall, or this spring, for any 11th or 12th grade student that would like to enroll and attend that. This spring, we'll be starting a Future Ready series at the OC with guest speakers that range from business owners, leadership, leaders in our community, college leadership series that we're partnering with Dallas College on. They have a leadership series that we're looking to bring, to offer to our students, as well as at nights and weekends for our community. And then, just past students are coming to talk about things, and we're just kind of building that as we go, and so much more to come in regards to that. We will be hosting our third annual Career Fair at the OC this spring for our high school 10th through 12th graders as well. Student Enterprises, so these are our student-run businesses that are actually up and running currently, so I just wanted to give you a brief update of where we're at with them. So, the Local has hosted over 103 breakfast, lunch, or dinner services, serving over 300 meals. Doggy Daycare has provided service for 115 dogs, and our Animal Science Center has cared for over 70 animals this year through our FFA program and junior FFA. Blooms has made over 700 floral or balloon arrangements. I feel like they've made more balloon arrangements in the past week than I've ever seen, but they make a lot of balloon arrangements for our partners and have created and have done 20 over events and decorating events. And then, the Beauty Bar has served over 120 customers and held over three events so far, with more to come at the OC. At the OC, we focus on experiential learning, that's everything, and so, we have seen this year, our synergy and advanced marketing students create a pop-up shop, develop social media marketing campaign for a majority of our businesses at the OC. Our cosmetology students have hosted multiple events and salon days. Law enforcement students support elementary campuses with pickup and drop-off, and developing PSAs for our high schools. Our OC Automotive students are gaining great experience with our partner with Martin's Automotive, and this year, we have 100% of our health science and education and trade and students on rotation, which is a first, and so, we're super excited about the partnerships we've built within health science and with the ECC next to us. That provides all the ample opportunity for our students that couldn't travel last year, the opportunity to gain that experience with teaching in the classroom. So, where are we going? That was a really high-level brief of what we've done this year, but where are we going? What's next year look like? So, we'll offer hospitality and event planning will be a new program for us next year. That's going to be a big one with the OC, and they'll have lots of experience within the OC in planning events and hospitality just within the building itself. We will have, all of our current first-year programs will all move into their second year of programming, so automotive, cosmetology, fashion, emergency services, and construction management will all move into their second-year courses. We're having to expand our synergy and career path. That class, as I feel like, doubled. This year, we had a really great teacher, and that, and one of great teacher are program spreads, right? And so, a lot of students want to be involved in career path and career prep and synergy so that they can work within the OC, and so, that is what that program does. We're trying to really bring in the arts into the OC. The arts have just as many careers as our career and technology programs, so why not, you know, capitalize on that? And so, next year, we've added to our course guide animation and game programming and design, and we'll continue to add each year more fine arts courses, kind of in a career pathway, trying to meld the two together. This spring, we have a lot of things coming up. We'll have more salon days at the Beauty Bar, where she's, after the success of Royal Foye for a Day, she's going to bring some of those days back, because it was such a huge success, for all ages, it was amazing. We'll have our elementary career day and career closet traveling around, and we'll have our third annual Career Fair for our students. OC Automotive will start opening for employee services at the OC. We'll start having our Texas Tech and Dallas College Nights, Community Nights coming up. Our fashion design class, we'll have a CTE fashion show coming up. They're currently in the process of designing their dresses and clothing for that, so that's going to be fun. We will have Blooms Community Events, we're going to start holding those this spring, as well as OC Junior Event Rentals to come, and esports events are ramping up. And finally, just with all of the student-operated businesses, just be on the lookout, watch the OC app and watch Facebook. From now, from starting spring until next year, we'll slowly start rolling out all these businesses and what we're doing with them as they get built and finished out, so just be on the lookout for more to come. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Any questions from the Board? I hear none. Thank you very much then.
Thank you.
Lots going on. Next, moving on to 6C, our Master Planning Update. Kim Morzak, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Before I invite Jeff Fisher from Gallagher to come up and give our monthly update on all of our projects, I do want to just inform the Board of one quick item. Back on the 15th, we had a pipe burst, as you know, at Blackburn flooded about a little over 20 classrooms and the full office. We had to, in an emergency, go ahead and get contractors out as quickly as we could, but I want to inform the Board of the cost of that damage. So, Blackman-Mooring Stematic came out immediately, got all the wet carpet out, started drying out the building. That bill was 82,000, a little over 82,000 dollars. And then, our partners and friends at Vector Concepts, Gallagher called them, and they were able to get out immediately and start laying new floor. Really proud that we only missed one day of school with an entire wing flooded. It's unheard of, so it was a great, great effort by everyone. Vector Concepts bill was 84,713 dollars, so the total damage for that building was That is less than the deductible for a building in Fornie ISD, so it would not go through insurance, that will be paid for through some other balance that John will have to tell you about, I don't know what that is, but I did need to inform you of the purchase. So, at this time, if there's no questions about that, I'm going to invite Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction up to give you our monthly update on construction projects. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the Board, it's good to be with you as always. I went the wrong way. There we go. First project on our update this month is the Opportunity Central project. As everybody knows from Friday night, that project is up and running and nearing completion. So, we're working on getting the punch list completed, working on finishing out some of the retail spaces, and getting things finished up over there, getting the outside buttoned up, and getting that ready to move forward and ready for graduation coming up here in a few months. North Fornie High School Freshmen Center, again, that project's wrapping up, we're finishing up the exterior work, landscaping, start putting down grass pretty soon, and working on getting the permanent signs and elevators finished up and the lighting programmed, and punch list completed on the interior of that one as well. Similarly for, oh, sorry, North Fornie Phase 2, that project is not similar to Phase 1 in completion percentage anyway. Working on the foundation on that, as you can see, we've got columns going up, the elevator's shaft is going up, we're working on putting in the underground electrical and plumbing, and again, moving that one forward to get ready to play football in next fall, and basketball as well. Fornie High School 9th grade expansion, that one, again, is similar to- Forney High School Ninth Grade Expansion, that one, again, is similar to North Forney in that the exterior areas are being completed, landscaping's being completed. Working on punch lists, getting that all worked out on the inside, and then working on finishing up the metal panels on the bridge that goes over to the main high school. Phase Two, Forney High School, the field house over there, as you can see, they're going up with the exterior masonry walls, getting ready to get the second floor framed up and poured so that they can continue the framing on the second floor, and mechanical and electrical and plumbing rough-ins going in there as well. Timmer Middle School has come along very nicely. You can see in both of those pictures, more so in the bottom picture, a lot of the exterior masonry's going on. They're getting ready to start roofing over there. I think they've already started on the roof on the storm shelter and the gym, the other gym. So that's in progress. And then on the interior, they're just moving along through the project with framing and rough-ins and working on some ceilings in some places. Warren Middle School, similar to Timmer, working on the exterior in earnest, and most of the structural steel's been completed and working on the roofing, the exterior skin, and the interior rough-in and finish up. Ed Wilson is similarly in the same shape as Timmer and Warren, working on getting the exterior brick veneer going, roughing in the mechanical and electrical on the interior, building walls, and doing a little bit of sheetrock. Innovation Way Expansion's getting close, as you can see there. I think the main thing that they've got to finish on that one besides the landscaping will be the retaining walls that have to be done, and they'll be starting on those pretty quickly. And then last but not least, Ray Intermediate, excuse me, once we got the teacher parking lot relocated, then we were able to start on the addition part of that project, and they've drilled the piers and got the lime completed, and they'll be working on excavating grade beams here shortly. Be glad to answer any questions you have on any of those.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any questions? One big question I keep getting is, what's the hole in the ground down by Warren? What's the big, deep hole for on the stadium?
The big, deep hole?
Been digging up the football field.
Oh, it's where they recurf in the football field. Or the? It's the turf, yeah. I wasn't sure if it was the practice field that you're talking about.
Anything else from anybody? Yes, sir?
Sir, for the jobs out of Mary completion, is it decided we'll finish on the budget? I see that we're trending, it looks great.
Yeah, yes. Excuse me. Yeah, Mr. Regan, we anticipate all of them will be within budget and most of them well under budget. Yes, sir?
Good question. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope you're getting feeling better, you sound like you've got the crowd too.
Just getting hungry.
Our next item is 6F, a Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Findings. We had the TA auditors, as usual, this month, and there were no findings to report. Item seven, a public form, no one signed up to address the board, so then we'll move on to item eight, Consent Agenda. Eight A is minutes from January 8th meeting. Eight B is a budget amendment. Eight C is a policy update, 122 is a final reading. Eight D is a low attendance waiver. Board may take action on these separately or collectively? Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, have a motion from Ms. Bateman to approve them collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Mudiya has a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to nine, consideration possible approval of resolution for National Dance, Music, and Theater in Our Schools Month. Ms. Christians-Esspool?
Thank you, Mr. President. So each March, Forney ISD celebrates Dance, Music, and Theater in Our Schools Month as recognized by the National Dance Educators Organization, the American Alliance for Theater in Education, Educational Theater Association, and National Association of Music Merchants. The arts support and help grow thousands of students in Forney ISD. That is why we celebrate Dance, Music, and Theater in Our Schools Month. This month was designed to raise awareness of the benefits of the arts and celebrate the students and teachers who partake in fine arts education. We asked the board to consider adopting a resolution recognizing March as the official Dance, Music, and Theater in Our Schools Month.
Thank you, Ms. Esspool. Dr. Cherry, do you have any further comments?
You know, I think, as you saw earlier tonight, the arts are very prominent in Forney ISD. They always have been extremely successful programs, but it's because we have a community that also supports the arts and a board that believes in them as well. So, we would recommend the approval of the resolution as presented.
You've heard from the administration. Board, do you have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution for National Dance, Music, Theater in Our Schools Month.
Have a motion from Dr. Adam Mudiya. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you all for your hard work in the arts, we appreciate that. Moving on to item 10, our consideration and possible approval of the 23, 24 full-time equivalent positions. Mr. John Chase has come into the microphone.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. As was discussed in the memo that you received with your board book, the district is, or the administration is asking for the addition of 163 positions to our 2025 budget, upcoming budget. We've had a, as you know, we work with a demographer, and he's estimating that we're gonna add 933 students for next year. In recent years, we've staffed on a ratio of one staff member for every 78 students. We'll be exceeding this a little bit this year, but the reason for that is that we're opening three schools. And with the opening of three schools, there's a lot of support staff that's required for that for outfitting a cafeteria, hiring a cadre of custodial staff and so forth. So, I think the following year, when we're not opening three campuses, we'll be able to kind of, you know, get closer, you know, and probably not hire as many as a staffing ratio would suggest that we'd have. But just to kind of wrap this up, the 163 positions, less the cost of the food service positions, will be funded out of the food service budget. And there are seven other positions that Pam Lettrel and Dr. Whitley have been working on a grant that's gonna pay for those positions. So if you strip that out, the cost of what's left in the general fund will be 8.8 million. And we expect to gain about 6.6 million dollars in additional revenues because of enrollment growth. And then we have the $8 million that we spent this year on one-time retention bonuses that we could also use to defray some of those costs. So, just to summarize in, we're requesting the permission to hire an additional 163 personnel units for the 25 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have any comments?
You know, I think John did a great job of summarizing this, is we're opening a lot of new schools, and a lot of the staff that will be within this are obviously some of our support staff, as well as special education numbers continue to increase. And so, there's a lot of special ed support as well for our students. So we'd recommend approving the FTEs as presented.
Board, you've heard the administration's motions, I mean, recommendations. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that the board approve the 2023, 2024 full-time equivalent position.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 11, consideration and possible approval of a resolution to pay employees during a school closure. Mr. Rick Gere?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. For the safety of our students, our staff, and the community as a whole, Forney ISD closed their schools and facilities on January 16, 2024, due to inclement weather. Board Policy DEA Local requires the board to adopt a resolution establishing the purpose and the parameters for paying employees during a school closure. Paying employees for hours not worked, obviously during inclement weather, something out of their control, is good for morale and obviously helps retain employees and reduces employee turnover. So the resolution meets the requirements of our policy, and it's the administration's recommendation that we approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Gere, for the explanation. Dr. Terry, any further word?
We do appreciate this consistent approach on the board to ensure that our staff doesn't lose a paycheck on these closure days. So we would recommend approval of the emergency closure waiver, or resolution as presented.
Board, you've heard their recommendation. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution paying employees during the school closure as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 12, consideration and possible approval of an order calling for school board election, Positions Three and Four for May 4, 2024. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cherry for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Items number 12, 13, and 14 are all related to our annual board elections. This year, it is Positions Three and Four that are up. And so, we would recommend approving, first, the order calling the election on May 4. Second, utilizing and continuing to utilize the election services with Kaufman County. And then finally, utilizing on item 14, the electronic voting system for early and day-of voting.
So first on item number 12, do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that the board approve the order calling for a school board election for Positions Three and Four on May 4, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. And moving on to item 13, consideration and possible approval of contract with Kaufman County for election services for the May 4 school board election. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion for that?
President Ferris, I move that the board approve the contract with Kaufman County for election services for the May 4, 2024, school board election Places Three and Four.
Have a motion for Ms. Burkhalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Then item 14, consideration and possible approval of the use of electronic voting systems only for both early voting and May 4 election day. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board approve the use of an electronic voting system for, only for both early voting and election day.
Have a motion for Ms. Bateman. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item 15, closed session, we took earlier this evening, so move on to item 16, which is consideration approval of employment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the employee of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item 17 is consideration and possible approval of contract renewal of administration and other professional contract personnel. May I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the contract renewal of administrators and other professional contract personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Mudiya. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. Number 18, consideration and possible action regarding pursuit of sanction of educator abandonment of contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board find that no good cause existed for Robert Duncan to abandon his contract with Forney ISD and authorize the superintendent to take necessary action to report the employee to SBECTEA for review.
Have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then 19, consideration and possible action of a Level Three Employment Employee Grievance Appeal. There's no action on that item tonight. Then 19 is our announcements, so just call attention to those. Board members, please notice, Monday, February 26th, February 26th is our next board meeting. So take note of that and see the other dates listed there. Is there anything else before I adjourn the meeting? There is something else?
No, sir.
You don't want to leave?
We were discussing spring break, sir.
Okay. We can drag this out if you want.
We were just talking about the reasons.
Okay. All right. I hear nothing else, then. This meeting will be adjourned at 8:05 PM.